All right, I've got seven o'clock. Call the meeting to order. If you'd join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes from the March 7th special meeting, March 7th regular meeting, March 8th joint meeting with Clay County. Mayor, call your wives, we'll have to do roll. Oh, sorry. The roll, please.
Helwig.
Here.
Holland. Humphrey.
Here.
Genoine.
Here.
Lattler.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Mayor, call your wives.
Here.
And Kianor Reed.
Here.
So, moving on to the minutes, regular meeting on the 7th, special meeting and the joint meeting on the 8th. Got a motion in a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Adoption of the agenda, do we have any changes or additions?
Move approval of the agenda.
A motion in a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Visitors to be heard. When addressing the council, persons addressing the council who use the microphone at the podium, please raise your hand to be recognized. Go to the podium, state your name and address. For items not on the agenda, members of the public may speak under visitors to be heard on any topic not on the agenda. Remarks are limited to five minutes and no decision will be made at this time. For agenda items, public testimony will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item. Public testimony will then be closed and the topic will be given to the governing body for possible action. At this point, only city council members and staff may discuss the current agenda item unless a council member moves to allow another person to speak and there is unanimous consent from the council. Questions from the council members, however, may be directed to staff or a member of the public through the presiding officer at any time. We have a proclamation today for Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. And Catherine?
Proclamation. Intellectual and developmental disabilities awareness month. Whereas, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, their families, friends, neighbors, and coworkers encourage everyone to focus on the abilities of all people. And whereas, the most effective way to increase this awareness is through everyone's active participation in community activities and the openness to learn and acknowledge each individual's contribution. And whereas, opportunities for citizens with intellectual and developmental disabilities to function as independently and productively as possible must be fostered in our community. And whereas, individuals with developmental disabilities deserve full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. And whereas, we encourage all citizens to support opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in our community, including full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. And whereas, individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities deserve nothing less. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the governing body of the city of Vermillion, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month in Vermillion, South Dakota, and call upon the residents of this great city to join in observing this month by hosting and supporting initiatives and activities that support and promote providing employment opportunities for people with disabilities. Dated at Vermillion, South Dakota, this 21st day of March 2022.
Thank you, Catherine, and James, I thought, I think you were gonna come and receive this?
Yep. Hello, as the mayor said, my name is James Brown. I've been a resident for two and a half years, so I'm going on three. I live at Town Square Apartments. I go to SEZDEC when I can. I also work at Mead Lumber and I also work at the University of South Dakota. I would just like to thank the city of Vermillion, SEZDEC, the people supported, the DSPs, and I also would like to thank People First and thank everyone to make this happen and, you know, make this aware of National Disability Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you, and did you folks want to get a picture? Yes? Okay. I think Kynella's ready to... And if you want to, you can fill up in front of the dais if you'd like. All right, turn around and smile at Kynella.
Turn around. Everybody turn around.
Oh.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Sorry.
Thank you. Joe? Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. This year's theme for March Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is Worlds Imagined. Hi, my name is Joseph Barth and I am an advisor for the advocacy group People First. Yesterday, we had our second meeting and it seemed like all members are excited to promote disability awareness, work, get back to working with various organizations such as USD Special Olympics Club and the Council for Exceptional Children and create more activities that promote inclusion in our community. I would like to give thanks to everyone who helped make this event possible. This includes a big thanks to the direct support professionals of SEZDEC. They have faced incredible, incredible hardships this year. From 2008 until 2015, I was employed at SEZDEC as a direct support professional and eventually as the former day services coordinator. I am proud to say that I have known some of my friends for well over a decade and can only imagine a better world and community full of inclusion for all people. I will never forget my earlier days as a direct support professional and the moments, the many moments, that have made me who I am today. My very first day of day at the Yale Group Home, I was greeted by an individual named Gerald Curtis, a person supported by SEZDEC. He told me my first job is to take him to an amateur wrestling event at the Eagles Club. It was great. We went and I was perplexed as Gerald left for a second and came back with a Bud heavy. I asked him, "Can you drink?" He replied, "Oh, yeah, I brought my ID and money. You're driving me home." There was another time where I was taking Gerald shopping. I stated out loud to him, "We can park in the handicap parking." Gerald looked at me and stated, "Joe, I'm not handicapped." He taught me a lesson with that one. "Pull back and go park in the far end, we're walking." That stuck with me for a long time. Gerald was a good man and I found out last year that he passed away... Well, I found out last year that in November 2020, he passed away of COVID-19, but his impact lasts a lifetime for me and I'm sure others. These moments convinced me to pursue an undergrad in special education and eventually a master's in special education. I will never forget my second graduation party, fully catered, held at the SEZDEC Center. We had a good time. I always imagined a bigger inclusive presence at the University of South Dakota, so much that when I was an adjunct instructor for a Sped 100 class, I created an extra credit activity where college students would join some Special Olympics athletes and participate in the big pink volleyball tournament at the Wellness Center. This is where I met Connor and eventually members of the USD Special Olympics Club who also had the dream of imagining a better inclusive world. This past, these past two years seemed like a pretty bad dream, though. A nightmare for some. Perhaps that nightmare is coming to an end. It feels like things are getting better. As my hair begins to gray, I realize that I cannot do this alone. SEZDEC cannot do this alone. We cannot do this alone. In order to build a better world, we need to do this together as community members. I would like to thank every direct support professional out there, the Assistant Director of Services that allowed me to take my friends out, Connor, the USD Wellness Center, the USD Special Olympics Club, the Council for Exceptional Children, my significant other, Katie, benchmark service coordinators, and Emily Ouse, the new Director of Services who allowed me to take a person supported, who happened to be a Jackrabbits fan, to the USD versus SDSU football game in November. This is where we watched the final moments. That game-winning pass for USD. Then we went downtown to socialize. And then at 9:00 PM, my friend said, "Joe, it's time to go home. Nothing good happens after midnight." Thank you all and let's create an inclusive world together. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to an item that is not on the agenda today? Any item that is not on the agenda? Counsel, anything not on the agenda that you want to address today? All right. We will move on to our public hearings. Our first item is application for funding from the South Dakota DNR for financial assistance for the Tom Street Lift Station project. And, that's Katie, oh, sorry.
So, the 2022 budget, or 2023 budget includes funding for the Tom Street Lift Station improvements. To assist with funding these projects, the city is applying for grants and loans in addition to using city reserve funds. The Southeastern Council of Governments, CCOG, is assisting the city with the water plan and this application loan process. The Tom Street Lift Station improvement will include relocation and full replacement of the lift station, wet well, and all associated equipment. The current plan is to relocate the lift and wet well from the city right of way to private property that the city is in process of purchasing. A combination of American Rescue Act allocations, SRF loan, and local reserves will be used to fund the application. And Sophie Johnson with CCOG is here also to present.
Sophie, if you want to speak?
Hello, my name is Sophie Johnson and I live in Sioux Falls. I am the Community Development Manager at the Southeastern Council of Governments and I am the City of Vermillion's representative. I'm here today to ask the council to consider approving a funding application to the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources for a combination of grant and loan to replace the Tom Street Lift Station. The project, we are estimating, will be about $1,075,000. And I believe the city of Vermillion would like to contribute some of their ARPA funding as Katie stated, in hopes that the state will match at a one-to-one ratio, which would bring the cost down to approximately $175,000. And if all goes well, the city could hopefully just pay for the replacement with some reserves. And I can stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Sophie. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Anyone in the public? Turning it to the council, questions for Katie or for Sophie? If not, I would entertain a motion. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, our next item is medical cannabis cultivation facility at 907 North Norbeck Street. Katie?
An application was received for a medical cannabis dispensary license from Dakota Natural Growers at 907 North Norbeck Street. The city medical cannabis dispensary license is for one calendar year and will expire December 31st, 2022. Dakota Natural Growers already has a city municipal medical cultivation license for calendar year 2022. The city council has the ability to issue license pursuant to the South Dakota Codified Law Chapter 34-20G and Chapter 123 of City Code. Dakota Natural Growers has provided all necessary information and staff have received the application. As noted in the police chief's report, the background checks have come back from the DCI and FBI. Chief Betson has stated that the eight applicants did not have any disqualifying felony charges per city ordinance or state statute. This additional license fee is $5,000, which is retained by the city. A medical cultivation license for Dakota Natural Growers was considered and approved at the December 6, 2021 regular meeting, where they paid the initial licensing fee of $11,695. The city council is asked to approve or deny a medical cannabis dispensary license for the Dakota Natural Growers.
Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, I'll turn it to the council, I believe the applicants are here if you have any questions. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our next item is medical cannabis cultivation facility, but this is a dispensary facility, are we using those terms interchangeably?
Oh, it's just for dispensary.
Okay. Dispensary facility at 112 East Main Street. Katie?
Okay. An application was received for a medical cannabis dispensary license from Dakota Herb for 112 East Main Street. The medical cannabis dispensary license is for one calendar year and would expire December 31, 2022. Dakota Herb has provided all necessary information and staff have reviewed the application. As noted in the police chief's report, two of the four background checks have come back from the DCI, none have come back from the FBI. Chief Betson has stated that the two applicants did not have any disqualifying felony charges per city ordinance or state statute. Dakota Herb will also have to apply for a state license and be approved before they can operate their dispensary in the state of South Dakota. The license fee is $11,695, which is retained by the city. If approved, the license will expire on December 31st. The city council is asked to approve or deny a medical cannabis dispensary license for Dakota Herb at 112 East Main Street.
Thank you, Katie.
And the applicants are here, too.
Okay. Awesome. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, I will turn it to the council. A quick question, John, when this has come up in, like, with our liquor licenses when we're just waiting on the background checks, is that something where we can just make it a contingency or...?
Yes, we generally, as a rule, don't bring them before the city council without the DCI background because the state usually can turn them around in two weeks. It can be months before we get the FBI ones back. So, historically, we haven't penalized an applicant for a liquor license or medical cannabis if we don't have an FBI license back. So, you can make a contingent on a positive or FBI check with no...
Disqualifying.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Counsel?
Move approvals, contingent on an appropriate background check.
We've got a motion in a second, further discussion, Lindsay?
Regarding the licenses that are, or the background checks that are not completed, does it matter if it's the owner or not? Or is it just, just the contingency will cover it?
With this particular medical cannabis license, the state in Chapter 34 required a background check on every individual that was involved. So, we would probably be holding those until all of those come back in. And as they hire new staff, they have to go through the same process, any applicant does, with regard to medical cannabis. So, I think if we have a FBI check, because typically, like I said, our DCI get turned around pretty quick, I think that's an opportunity that we'd have the applicant come back before the city council and address. If we have an FBI background check, which provides information that would not be suitable for an applicant. Because the DCI, just as background, can only check offenses or activity in the state of South Dakota. So, if they did something in Ohio, we are not going to find out about it. So, until we get the FBI.
Further discussion? Julia, did you have? All right, we've got a motion in a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. It's a supportive community. The next item is Ordinance 1457, amending Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 155, Zoning Regulations, Section 155.008, Definitions to amend the term kennel. Jose?
Thank you. The proposed amendment, as you mentioned, would be changing the definition or adding to the definition of kennel, as found on the ordinance currently. The addition would be a sentence that reads, "Animals may be kept for a maximum of 30 days at a time." The Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the city council approve this amendment to the definition at their February 28th meeting. The city council approved the first reading of the ordinance at the March 7th meeting. No changes have been made to the ordinance since then. The costs incurred by the city at this point would be advertising for the public hearing. Future costs will include publishing the minutes of the city council minutes. Administration recommends approval of the second reading of ordinance 1457. Since this is a second reading, a roll call vote is required.
Thank you, Jose. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, alternate counsel?
Move approval.
Got a motion in a second and I will set the thing here. All right, we have seven ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. I know. Yeah, yeah. Kennels! All right, our next item is Ordinance 1459, amending Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 155, Zoning Regulations, Section 155.037, General Business District, Conditional Uses to Include Kennel as a Conditional Use. Jose?
Thank you again. So, this proposed amendment is in tandem with the previous one and will also be with the following item on the agenda. But this one in particular proposes to place kennels as a conditional use in the general business district. Besides allowing kennels as a conditional use within this district, the amendment will also be requiring that kennels be at least 150 feet away from residential districts. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at their February 28th meeting. They, at that meeting, they unanimously recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance as presented. The city council approved the first reading of the ordinance at the March 7th meeting. No changes have been made since that reading of the ordinance. Same as the previous, the costs incurred by the city up to this point have been advertising of the public hearing. Any future costs will include publishing the minutes for the city council minutes. Administration recommends approval of the second reading of ordinance for 1459 and similarly, it's a roll call vote because it's a second reading.
Thank you, Jose. Do we have any testimony from the public on this item? Seeing none, turn it to the council. Got a motion in a second. And we'll start the vote. Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our final kennel-related item is Ordinance 1458, amending Title 15, Land Usage, Chapter 155, Zoning Regulations, Section 155.039, General Industrial District, Conditional Uses to Include Kennel as a Conditional Use.
So, this item here then would be placing kennels within the general industrial district and it's, it would just be adding another location for kennels to be available to the public if a person chooses to open a kennel. Similarly, though, the kennels would be a conditional use and they would have to be at least 150 feet away from residential districts. This ordinance amendment has also been reviewed by the city's Planning Commission at the February 28th meeting. They recommend that unanimously that the ordinance be approved and the city council has also had the first reading at the March 7th meeting. Administration recommends approval of the second reading of ordinance 1458. Again, roll call is required.
Thank you, Jose. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, turn it to the council. Motion in a second. Start the vote. Seven yays, zero nays. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, our first item is First Reading of Proposed Ordinance 1460, amending Title 11, Business Regulations, Chapter 114, Transportation Network Drivers and Companies, Sections 114.02 and 114.06, amending the taxicab license application requirements and requiring a rate card. Stone?
Thank you. So, at the April 5th, 2021 noon meeting, the city council reviewed some proposed changes to the current transportation network company, also known as TNCs, and taxi regulations. During this meeting, we were provided, staff was provided direction on the topic of how we should proceed with this. Staff began researching, but overall, it got delayed. At the March 7th, 2022 noon meeting, the city council reviewed the proposed changes to the TNC and taxicab regulations as expressed, and also expressed interest in moving forward with the item. Again, this, just a little background to it, to continue on with that. The taxi regulation was originally implemented in 1975 and it's not been amended since 2019. So, basically, what we are trying to do here with terms of us changing it is if you see in subsection 11402B, we're adding four. So, we're basically adding some language to it. So, we're adding four, five, six, and seven. So, number four stating the physical address where each motor vehicle is stored and maintained. If the location ceases use, the city must be notified within five days. Again, that's within the TNCs, so that's regulations towards them. The reason we're adding these, just before I get into them a little bit more, is to kind of even the playing field with these taxi companies to allow for TNCs to pretty much have an even opportunity with taxi companies in our town. Number five, they'd also need a signed statement included with the DCI and FBI background checks as to whether the applicant and each of the applicant's owners, operators, agents, or employees has ever caused personal injury or property damage arising from the use or operation of a motor vehicle. Number six is pretty similar to that as well, but instead, this written document would have to say that they have not been convicted in any state or of any municipal driving or vehicle-related petty offenses or Class II misdemeanor violations within the last three years. They can't be convicted of any Class I misdemeanors or felonies, non-driving municipal ordinances within the last seven years. The nature of the offenses and the punishment or penalty assessed, therefore. Number seven, a signed statement included with the DCI and FBI background check as required in 11402B5 and 11402B6. It'll be required for all applicants involved after the initial application process. So, they can't just essentially give us all of that and then when they hire someone on, just keep them under the radar. They'll have to continue on with that process. So, it'll pretty much be changing. And then again, on, as we continue on, we're also changing subsection 11406, Display of Rate Card. What we're going to be requiring taxicabs to do is an activity log. Each taxicab vehicle must keep a daily activity log, listing the date, time, trip origination address, and trip destination address. And it must be a log that's available for inspection by and upon the request of the city. a log that's available for inspection by and upon the request of the city, and it has to be maintained for a singular year. That, when it's included in B, moves what was originally B down to C, which is TNC shall present fair calculation method on their digital networks. So essentially here today, what administration is recommending is that there's the approval of the first reading of the proposed ordinances 1460, of proposed ordinance 1460, amending Title XI Business Regulations, Chapter 114, Transportation Network Drivers and Companies, Sections 114.02B, by adding four, five, six, and seven, and also 114.06 by adding B and renumbering C.
Thank you, Stone. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, counsel? Motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is first reading of proposed ordinance 1461, amending Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70, General Traffic and Parking Regulations, Section 70.072, prohibited in certain places, clarifying language in 70.072A4 and 70.072A8. Stone?
Thank you. So again, a little background to this. At the January 18th, 2022 noon meeting, the city council learned more regarding what end-of-driveway parking is and the issue that it presents within the community. At this meeting, staff were asked to continue to research other municipalities and find items that were from other places that we can incorporate within this ordinance. At the March 7th, 2022 noon meeting, staff presented those additional proposals and the stuff that needed to be added to the ordinance. Staff was then directed to create a proposed ordinance utilizing the newly described language. So that's essentially what we have here today with this first reading. So what we are doing is with subsections 70.072, again, with the traffic code. So this ordinance is amending the City of Vermillion Code of Ordinances, Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70, General Traffic and Parking Regulations, Section 70.072, prohibited in certain places, amending 70.072A4 and 70.072A8. So again, A, it states that it shall be unlawful for the operator of a motor vehicle to stop, stand, or park the motor vehicle in any of the following places except when necessary to avoid conflict with other traffic, or in compliance with the directions of a police officer or traffic signal or sign. With four, we already had some language kind of establishing this with fire stations. So right now, what we have is within 20 feet of the driveway entrance to any fire station, and on the side street opposite of the entrance to any fire station, with 75 feet of said entrance. And what we've added on is when properly signed, posted. And then again, for number eight, in front of, and then where we added on here, we did have a little bit with regards to alleyway access, but this is where the end-of-driveway part comes in, really into play with what we're trying to accomplish here. In front of, and then here we add on, or on three feet of either side of a public or private driveway, entrance or an alleyway access. And then at the end, driveway entrance is to include the flared end or the driveway return as well. So today, what administration is recommending is for the approval of this first reading of the proposed ordinance 1461, amending Title VII Traffic Code, Chapter 70, General Traffic Parking Regulations, Section 70.072, prohibited in certain places, and clarifying end-of-driveway parking. We would ask that it be effective July 1st, 2022. Reason being is because of it would coincide with the upcoming fee proposal that we have, the fee change proposal coming up. So again, administration recommends that this first reading be approved.
Thank you, Stone.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, turn it to counsel. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Stone. Our next item is resolution authorizing application for financial assistance from the South Dakota DNR for Tom Street Lift Station. It's really hard to start saying DA, like I have to really, D A N R. Katie?
Thank you. So the 2023 budget will include the Tom Street Lift Station improvements with an estimated cost of $1,075,000. The project will be funded from a state revolving loan, SRF, South Dakota Department of Transportation, and city sewer fund reserves. There is a possibility that ARPA could provide an additional grant match, but the guidelines are not finalized. CICOG is assisting the city with the grant loan application with a deadline of March 31st. And then the grant loan application requires the city council by resolution to authorize the application for financial assistance and designate an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests. Administration recommends approval of the resolution authorizing the application for financial assistance and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests for the Tom Street Lift Station improvements.
Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, counsel? Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is vacate utility easement between lots eight and nine, block six, Bliss Point Edition, City of Vermillion, Clay County, South Dakota. Jose?
Thank you. On February 23rd, the city received an application for a conditional use permit from the Mart Brothers for construction of townhomes at the above previously mentioned location. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the conditional use permit for the proposed use at their March 14th meeting. However, besides conditional use due to the type of construction, these are the two lots that we're talking about right now. And just for reference, there are an existing set of townhomes right here. Just when the aerial was done, they weren't finished yet. So you would essentially have townhomes, 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 and more than likely, townhomes in these two lots. Regardless, because of the type of construction that you're considering, or the contractors considering, this utility easement that's straddling that property line would have to be vacated or terminated. That's what this document is doing, or this item on the agenda would be doing. We, there is no statutory process to follow. So we kind of have a modified version that we like to follow when we do these. Essentially, we ask the property owners or the person that's applying for the vacation of the easement to contact the utilities. So they have to essentially go through the same process as if it was right away, with exception that they don't have to get a signature from each of the property owners adjacent to the utility easement. So otherwise, it's the same process. In this case, a contractor did follow that process. They got all the signatures that were required from the utilities. So there's no utilities over there. And with that being said, we think it would be viable or prudent anyways to vacate this easement so the contractor can proceed with the construction. They have paid the application fee of $150. With that being said, staff recommends approval of the vacation of the utility easement between lots eight and nine, block six, Bliss Point Edition, City of Vermillion, Clay County, South Dakota.
Thank you, Jose. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing none, turn it to counsel. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I think we like use all of our energy on the clapping. Kalen's clapping, thank you. Our next item is presentation of the 2021 Annual Financial Report, and this is really going to deserve some applause, so save up. Katie?
Thank you. So the annual financial report is required to be presented to the city council no later than the first meeting in May. As the city is required to have an annual audit, having the report done now allows time to complete the balance of the comprehensive annual report, and for the auditors to begin their audit work. The report is presented, that is presented un-audited and contains only the financial section. For the annual report, the introductory, management discussion, and analysis, footnotes, and stats tables contained in the, is contained in the comprehensive annual financial report and will be completed and included in that report. Upon acknowledgement of receipt by the city council, the required exhibits will be published and filed with the Department of Legislative Audit. The city council has previously approved a contract with Williams and Company to audit the financial statements that will be performed within, within April to June timeframe. I have also included in the, a report that is attached, a little bit more detailed explanation for the un-audited financials. So if you, any of you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them, or if you come across questions in the future, I can, I'm always available to answer them. Administration recommends the city council acknowledge receipt of the 2021 un-audited annual report.
Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to give feedback on this item? Not? Turn it to counsel.
Move for approval and applause.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yay! I like this. We should definitely keep doing this. All right. Next, we've got the 2021 Un-audited Annual Financial Report, additional information. That was, it's all, okay, I've got it as two items. Appointment to the Consolidated Board of Equalization. Katie?
So the county, city, and school district have each adopted resolutions to consolidate the Board of Equalization within its city limits. The Consolidated Board hears property owners' appeals of real estate evaluation within the city and consists of five county commissioners, three city council members, and one school board member. The county auditor and director of equalization scheduled the appointment for the Consolidated Board. The city council will need to appoint three members to serve as city representatives on the Consolidated Board. The remaining, remaining members will be designated as alternatives to fill a vacancy if a member is unable to attend. The first day of hearings will be Tuesday, April 12th, 2022, at 1:30 PM.
And I think we had two volunteers today at noon, and I'm willing to be the third.
So that was Brian, Julia, and Kelsey.
Yep. And then if one of us can't make it, everyone else is an alternate. Do we need to make a motion to make that appointment?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is quote for cleanup of bike trail from 12th Street to Moore Street. Jose?
Thank you. So in 2010, as all of you know, the city experienced some flooding along the Vermillion River. As a consequence of that flooding, some of the bike trail that was recently at that point constructed had to be closed because of some bank erosion. So since 2010, the city has essentially closed a bike trail from 12th Street all the way to the west end of the trail, which is appropriately named at the West Street Trailhead. So there's a very strong possibility that this year, we're going to be seeing the construction, reconstruction of that portion of the trail that has been abandoned for quite a few years. We're going to be relocating the, a part of that trail from Moore Street north towards Broadway, and then from Broadway West or West Street. However, there's a section that hasn't been used from 12th to Moores, that we thought, well, let's go and check it out to see what it looks like. There has been quite a few flooding events, and we haven't necessarily been maintaining it as far as the vegetation and so forth. So last, at the end of last year, we actually went out there, 2021, and we walked the trail to see what the recent flooding events had, if they had done anything to the trail that was already there. We found that there was quite a lot of accumulation of sediment from the floods. Some of the fences that were constructed back in 2009, 2010 were also damaged. So we believe that in order to have an open trail from 12th Street all the way to West Street, we have to go ahead and do maintenance on this section between 12th and Moores. This portion here that we're discussing today would essentially just be removing the sedimentation that accumulated over the floods, and then also remove any fences or any portions of the fence that have fallen on the trail itself. After that, then we would have to go there at a later time, get another quote for replacing the fence. But at the very least, I want to make sure that we have the trail open. So when the section from Moores to West is ready and done, that we can actually open it from 12th Street, and you could walk from University all the way down to West Street. So in order to do that, the city asked for two quotes for, from two local contractors. The low bid or low quote was from Walker Construction out of Vermillion. Their quote was $4,278.90. The city will be utilizing second penny funds to pay for this project, because this was included in the 2022 budget, that the budget will have to be revised this, this budget session in 2022. Staff recommends awarding the contractor the project to Walker Construction for the cleanup of the bike trail from 12th Street to Moore Street for $4,278.90.
Thank you, Jose. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will turn it to the counsel. Catherine?
This is not specifically about the portion that we're talking about today, but recently, when I've been walking on the trail between University and 12th Street, there's been a lot, I think, it seems like there's a larger-than-normal amount of trees, just sort of down trees out in the brush alongside the trail. And I'm wondering, what is the normal process for just sort of cleaning up the general area around the trail?
Well, I guess, I would have to, I wish that Jim was here, but my understanding is that if you notice, there's a portion of the trail, next to the trail that's mowed. If it falls within that section, then they'll go ahead and move it as soon as they can. Now, if it falls beyond that section, then it tends to stay there. It is more, that's more of the natural area, I guess, if that's what you want to call it. But if it poses a safety, health concern, then they will go ahead and remove the branch or the tree or anything of that sort.
Mostly wondering about like, fire danger, or, you know, when there's a whole bunch of...
As far as I know, it hasn't, that area beyond there hasn't been maintained. Some of it is actually private property. Parts that are not, but I can talk to Parks and Rec and see.
Okay. I know that that wasn't part of this, but it's something, a question that came up just last week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from the counsel? Yep. Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Move on to our city manager's report. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to cut a reminder, back in 2020, the city council had a first reading of ordinance 1423, and that was to deal with the emerald ash borer. That had to do with the definition of a nuisance tree, tree care, and some tree removal. As the emerald ash borer has moved a little bit closer, we just kind of want to put a reminder out there that that ordinance has had first reading. We set it up that way so that second reading would be, something would be quicker, we could do and implement quicker, should the borer or, or get here. That ordinance, 1423, is available on the city's website if they would like to take a look at it. Just a reminder, petition packets for one of the city council seats, either mayor or ward representative, city council member, those are available in the city finance office, and they're due by 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 29th, with the election being on Tuesday, June 7th. Speaking of trees, our tree board does meet this coming Wednesday. It's at 9:30 in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. Just a reminder, if you're not going to Kansas, Kidder Street will be closed from Court Street to Market Street this Saturday, March 26th, from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that is for the Polar Plunge and Law Enforcement Torch Run. Our Planning Commission has a meeting next Monday, March 28th, at 5:30 in the Powell Conference Room here at City Hall. They will be looking at the final plat of the Spady Edition over there, North Norbeck, north of Cherry Street. Couple items now, landfill recycling center. Our landfill, we're going to be returning to having the landfill open two Saturdays a month, and the recycling center open two Saturdays a month. So on the second and fourth Saturday of each month, we will have the landfill open from 8:00 to noon, the recycling center 9:00 to noon. Some of those things coming out of COVID, and we learned some things about staffing and other things, that we've adjusted those hours. So starting in April, we will have those two facilities open on the second and fourth Saturday, and that will continue through the summer, through the month of October. And finally, we're having again a household hazardous waste collection. We usually have one of those a year. We've gone to, just do some scheduling things, an April timeframe. Last year is the first year we tried, tried an April event. So Friday, April 22nd, from 2:00 PM until, 6:00 PM, we will have a household hazardous waste collection at our recycling center, 840 North Crawford Road, and the cost is $10 per vehicle.
Thank you, John. Do we have any questions for our city manager? Do we have any questions for our city manager?
One question that we did have kind of related to the downed trees, there's also been sometimes some real carcasses, I guess, like big deer carcasses, like right off the trail. What's the, what's the general procedure for that if there's a big rotting animal?
So we have, we had one of those happen. I think we worked with the State Patrol on that, and then they have identified groups or whatever that will come and take it out for disposal. So let us know at City Hall, and we'll be happy to, I think it's the State Patrol, if I remember correctly, we work with on that.
Okay. Awesome. Or Kalen will come get it?
Kalen will get it.
Kalen will come get it?
No. Is that your group? Is it State Patrol?
Yeah. Yeah, the wildlife.
Okay.
They're supposed to come get it, but...
Well, it's in two places now.
Yeah, we can't tell if it's like two different deer or a deer that's just been like being moved around, but it's, it's kind of gross. All right. Any other questions for our city manager? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to invoices payable. Any questions for Katie?
Will we pay our bills?
We have a motion and a second to pay our bills. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries. We have no consensus agenda.
Move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all. Yay!